Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Well, welcome to the Monday, August 1st, 2022 Board of Alderman Meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting?
It's almost second.
Your motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Tonight, we're going to start with outside the rail. This is for items not on the agenda. If the public would like to speak, we'll kick it off with Tim Ballard. Tim, if you'd like to approach the podium and that would be great.
My daughter says I won't need this.[63.01][63.01](Laughter). I'm here, I live on 13 Clark Street in Rutland, Vermont. I'm here because of the trashcans that are being left out on the street 24/7. And I have a concern about it. I talk to my neighbors and they really don't think it's a concern. My concern is we got more raccoons and skunks on Clark Street than we've ever had. I've seen a bear over the northeast that's going to draw in stuff. And I'm afraid, there are 60-gallon trashcans now. They're not 30. So, I've talked to them, they're not really interested in doing, they've left, there's five people, there's only nine houses on that street, and five people are doing it now. And it's not a lot in the city, I guess, as far as I know, and I don't want it to become a norm. It doesn't look good. You know, I've been there since 61, and they just started doing this last year. So, nobody should lie, I talked to my neighbor, he goes, "Well, I don't want to smell my trash." His trashcan's closer to my door than it is his. That's all, that's all I had to say. I wanted to see if it could become a concern because I'm afraid there's going to be a bear attack because bears are going to be drawn to these cans and somebody's going to end up getting hurt and then we're going to go, "Oh, I wish we did something about it." Thank you.
Any questions?
So, if I may...
Do I stay for that?
If you would.
Well, Mr. Ballard called me and left me a message with his concern about this. So, I did go up and take a ride because his concern was, was this starting to be a trend? And so, I rode around Clark Street. There certainly was four or five houses that have the big casella trash bins out toward the road. So then, I just kind of rode around the rest of the neighborhood and didn't see that that was a trend going on in other areas. I took a ride around the northwest section, et cetera. So, in discussing this with Mr. Ballard, he was looking for an ordinance type of thing. And my, my discussion with him was that it did not appear to be a citywide issue and, you know, maybe simply talking with his neighbors to say, you know, can you put your trashcans away? The concern he had of how it makes the neighborhood look. And unfortunately, that didn't work either.
I did that three weeks ago. I did that first.
Right. So, I think that's why Mr. Ballard was coming to see what, if anything, you know, we could, we could do.
Alderman to play.
And so, Mr. President, I have spoken to casellas as well because it's, it's a lot of times, the casella receptacles that are around town leave them out the night before, they pick them up the next day, and, you know, the homeowner usually put them away. It used to be where casellas or any other trash people used to be able to go right in the garage and take the garbage out, take trash out. And now, with liability reasons, thefts and stuff like that that's happened, that's why everybody's got to put their stuff out on the, on the...
Well, you know why they really do it? They have a big arm now, so they only need one guy driving. He grabs the trashcans. So, they, so the three guys that you see hired, he only needs one. And so, it's a big arm that comes out, and all you have to do is roll them in and out, they're on wheels.
Yep.
And the people on Clark Street don't want to do it anymore because one started it, then they go, "Oh, it's easier." Well, you know, life is easier. I even offered to one of them, I said, "If it's too much for you, I'll roll them back for you."
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, we are still in outside of the rail. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from outside the rail with items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, it's time for communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Where's yours?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So, under communications tonight, I had two issues I'd like to talk to you about, and they're both regarding appointments. First up, two weeks ago, I nominated A.J. Shaw for your consideration to the Rutland Redevelopment Board, the double R.A. I would like to ask politely if you would untable the nomination and take a vote.
I'm so moved. Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to untable. It's been seconded for the R.R.A. nomination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Would the clerk please circulate the ballot box?
Thank you very much. While the clerk counts the votes, Mr. Mayor. All right, and while you're counting up those votes. Secondly, addressing the vacancy on the Rutland City Board of Alderman. Several days ago, I had a chance to sit down with Matt Reveal and discuss his nomination. With his increasing working commitments and other considerations, we have decided to withdraw the nomination. I want to thank Matt for his willingness to step up and serve, as I believe he would have done a terrific job here on the Board of Alderman. However, we move on. So, I immediately went to work to find a nominee to present to this board. After consulting with several of my colleagues and others, I reached out to someone who I have the greatest respect for through his lifelong service in multiple roles here in the city of Rutland. I got to know Joe through his work on the Board of Civil Authority in particular, as a justice of the peace, especially as many will recall during the reappraisal where we worked on, I think it was several hundred appeals of that reappraisal over a 12-month period. And that was stellar work on Joe's part, and he's been a part of that for a long time. Joe is well-respected in this community, will bring a much-needed balance to the board, and will fill the vacancy with vigor and respect that we all expect. And I have a memo here that reflect what I'm asking. So, I enthusiastically present the name of Joe Barbergalo to fill the vacancy at the Board of Alderman, and I'm asking you to table the nomination tonight.
I'll move. Second. We have a motion that has been seconded to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. And finally, I wanted just to thank everyone for coming out to the celebration this last Friday of the inaugural Burlington to Rutland, New York City, Ethan Allen Amtrak Run. We had a huge crowd. The media was well-represented. We had plenty of food, had some entertainment, and I think there was close to a couple of hundred people. It was a, it was a great day for Rutland. It was a, a good presentation on our behalf, and I want to thank everybody here that showed up and onward to New York City and Burlington. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And the result of the vote for A.J. Shaw on the R.R.A. Board is nine yeses, zero noes. Thank you very much. Welcome to the board, A.J.
All right, looks like we're all set, so thank you very much.
Thank you. A.J., do you want to say anything or come on up?
Hello, everyone. Rutland City residents, Board of Alderman, mayor. Just wanted to really thank everyone for the opportunity. I've been living in Rutland for about 14 years now. I've really grown to consider this home now, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to really helping continue, you know, I've seen Rutland grow in the 14 years I've been here. And I'm really excited to help to see Rutland continue to grow in my, you know, being able to be part of that, so thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Due to a slight technicality, we're going to read in almost all of the agenda items. All of these are things that need to be addressed tonight. Typically, when this happens, we can, we can choose those immediate addressed items and put them back on the agenda, so we're going to do that. I'll read through them, and then I'll ask you to vote as a group that these are to be placed on the agenda. So, the following items. Superintendent Peters, Justin Thomas Memorial Park renovation project. Superintendent Peters, request to apply for recreation grant. Tyler Don, request for approval for RFP for Pine Hill Park. Commissioner Rotundo, referral request for a street paving project. Commissioner Rotundo, referral request possible Route 4-7 lane reconfiguration. Ted Gillan, Assistant Engineer, water allocation request approval post-road Rutland town. Attorney Blumer, request for build IDO regarding tax sale properties, which will be in executive session. And Attorney Blumer, executive session regarding the labor and relations agreement. Those are all under reports and letters from department heads and officials. We also have reports of select committees, Alderman Franco, IT Committee, and then a petition and letter miscellaneous communication, SCP request for state fair parade.
I'll move to add to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to add all those items to the agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your accommodation. Okay. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials, Superintendent Peters. We'll start with the Justin Thomas Memorial Park renovation project. That is page one in your packets. There's also been a small handout.
So, I'm not going to talk too much. I'm going to actually hand it right over to the Thomas family, but we are here tonight to spread some good news about one of our parks. And I'm going to let them talk first, then anything that I feel like I need to fill in, I will do so. One thing I do want to mention that this is a 25-year-old park. When I came on as superintendent, Tyler, when we met, he said, "This is coming." It was five years ago, you know, so it was on our radar. Leaf, his dad, was the recreation director at that point when this park was built. We've been able to watch pictures, videos, which I will send out to the board. It's about a 20-minute-long video of how this park came, how the fundraising came, and I'll talk a little bit more about the money piece after they share their story.
Guess that's me.
You're right.[733.96][733.96](Laughter).
Welcome back.
Well, thank you, thank you. You know, we talk about time and how it flies, and it's just hard to believe that it's been a while since I've been in this chamber. And when you reflect back on Justin and the story of the park, it's hard to believe that it's been 25 years. And it's been 25 great years. If you go down there and look at the structure today, you can absolutely see the use that it's had over those 25 years. It's, it's overwhelming. It's really nice. So, I'm going to share a little bit of the story, but my biggest part of the thing I really want to do tonight is really say thank you. First of all, to Kim and Tyler. They have just been great to work with. Tyler has been with us for several years now because, again, as Kim said, this has been on his radar. It was a great honor to work with his dad when this project came about 25 years ago. We were on a family vacation down in Atlanta, Georgia, and we ended up losing Justin within 24 hours to a rare case of meningitis that he came down with. At that moment in time, of course, a young family with our, our daughter, Justin's sister, Kayla, at four and a half, and coming back to, to Rutland, we really wanted to do something that would memorialize Justin in a unique way, but also give something to the community that has treated us very well. Prior to us going on vacation, just by chance, I ended up catching Tyler's dad, Leaf, on Peg TV, and he was talking about a project called the Adopt a Park Fund that he was launching to help bring some resources to the parks that were in need. And that kind of stuck in me for reasons that I now understand why that stuck in me for so many months prior to us going on vacation. So, when we came back, that's what we decided that we were going to do. And we worked hand-in-hand with, with Leaf, so many members of the community. You know, there's a lot of people that we want to really make sure that we take time to say thank you to. In the course of a year, we were able to raise $30,000. Back then, the structure that you see now actually cost $30,000. And we were also able to get another $30,000 in-kind donations to help us out. You know, I want to give a big thank you to, you know, to Skip Pratico, Pratico Landscaping, the stuff that's down there now, all the trees and all the shrubbery and stuff he did an awesome job with. You know, some of the pictures, and Henry, I'm sure you'll recognize your wife in one of those pictures. She did a great celebrity wait-a-thon for us to help us raise money, so on and so forth. So, you know, Michelle, Kayla, and I have had a chance to meet with a lot of these folks. So, again, here we are, 25 years later, and the community has really paid tribute to the message that we really wanted to create down there. In that small space, we didn't want to create just another park, another playground. We really wanted to create a park where families could go down there and take the time. Lots of times, you go to a playground and it's mom and dad or grandma trying to pry the kids off from the play structure, "Hey, it's time to go home." Well, down at Justin's Park, it's completely the opposite. It's the kids that are, "All right, we're worn out, we're tired, grandma, let's, you know, mom and dad, it's time to go home," because they find a spot down there where they can have a little bit of time, on a bench, reading a book, sharing time with their family, and knowing that they're in a nice, safe environment down there. So, the park, yes, is in need of a lot of good enhancements down there. And Tyler and Kim have spelled out their wish list of stuff. And obviously, the biggest item that's, that's down there is replacing the structure. If you have a chance to go down there and visit it, it's certainly not abused, per se. It is just used and overly used, and that, and that's not a bad thing. 25 years, it's, it's, it's great, and it's, and it's overwhelming, and, and it's, it's certainly accomplished more than what Michelle, Kayla, and I ever thought that the park would. So, I just wanted to, again, say thank you to the community, thank you to Tyler and, and to Kim, and also thank you to the board because they also, by proclamation way back when, officially named that the Justin Thomas Memorial Park. And that's just, in itself, is, is just a great honor. And I'll just be quiet here for a minute. If anybody's got any questions, I'll, I'll answer them real quick. Anything?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that I was six years old when this park was built, and it's about two blocks from my house. And I grew up going to this park and then bringing my younger brother and sister to come and enjoy it when I would babysit them. And so, thank you for bringing this to our community, and I'm deeply sorry for your loss and so grateful that we now are able to spend family time here at this park, so thank you.
Yes, yes. And it's hard for me to comprehend that. We're on to like the second and third generation of folks that have enjoyed those parks. I mean, time is just really, really gone. So, I'm sure Kim and Tyler were getting into the numbers a little bit, but as we said, the structure, we want to kind of replace it with basically what's, what's there because we do feel that that structure is the right size and it fits the need, and it's very attractive to, you know, the kids and, and stuff, and it is a little bit more expensive this time.[1114.01][1114.01](Laughter). So, Michelle, Kayla, and I just want to also, I know there's a lot of efforts in, that Kim is doing and, and the city is doing as far as capturing some money to help out with this project. And, you know, that does not go unnoticed, and I want you to know that Michelle, Kayla, and I have also put in a good chunk of money. We deposited $25,000 into the Justin Thomas Memorial Fund in recognition of everybody that has come to enjoy the park and also the efforts that Kim and Tyler have, have put in there. So, any other questions or comments?
Questions for Roy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Roy.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very well. So, just really brief about the money. The donation of the $25,000 is going to go a long way. Our goal for fundraising is 50,000 from the community, and just thinking that we raised third, they raised 30,000 25 years ago, we think that that's doable. Plus, with social media, so much different. And I'm going to talk just briefly about what that's going to look like, just so you are in the know, because they plan on launching the fundraising efforts tomorrow morning. Timeline, I'm going to be asking for a grant, to apply for a grant tonight that I have to have in by September 10th, and our goal is to have this going by May. That will be exactly the 25 years. We think it's doable. We've gone out for bid right now for this play structure, which we'll get in about three weeks, which is coming in anywhere between 60 to 100. We're looking at the final project to be 120,000. That will replace the fence that is 70 years old, I learned tonight. I thought it may be 25 years, it's 75. The gazebo, the walking path, which is going to be a project within itself, very much community-oriented. Roy and Michelle are involved in our meetings and making some of these decisions. So, with that being said, my recommendation... I'm requesting the board to, for us to apply for the recreation grant, building communities for the amount of 25,000 with a request matching of 25,000 directly from the city. So, this grant is a matching grant up to 25,000 for the Justin Thomas Memorial Park play structure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move that motion as stated.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments for Kim? Superintendent Peters, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Awesome.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Superintendent Peters, is that also in, is that, is there a second grant?
Nope. That's it, and then the park.
All right, so Tyler, a request for approval for RFP Pine Hill Park, pages two and three in your packets.
I just want to say again, thank you to Roy and his family. It's kind of crazy for me to, you know, 25 years ago, my father helped him put this play structure in, and now I am helping them achieve the same goal. So, it's, it's pretty amazing how things become full circle and, you know, folks, I mean, Roy helped my father move to Maine when he left Rutland. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing. So, very excited to work on this project. It does mean a lot to me, and I've done a lot of work on this structure over the years, and Roy is right. It's not abused, it's used. And man, it's, it's, we've tried to keep up and replace chips and pieces and parts, and it's just, it's, it's a, it's a great park. And yeah, so, thank you. So, pass that. The Board of Finance meeting on Monday, July 25th, we had an RFP that was out for hiking path and mountain bike trail restoration work in Pine Hill Park. The RFP came back with only one bidder. The bidder was KSA Building LLC for the amount of $58,311. The initial grant that was received for this work was $79,407. The grant is a two-part grant, I believe, in the spring. Once this work is done and the restoration work is done, then BYCC will come in in the spring and finish up the remainder of the work. So, we're just looking for approval from the Board of Alderman to approve the, the $58,311 for KSA Building LLC, Jay Rosenbaum.
We have a motion to suspend...
Alderman to tell?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to move the request that Tyler made.
Okay. Motion to...
Second.
Request is stated, and it's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thanks much, appreciate it.
Really appreciate it. Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Reminder, National Night Out is tomorrow at 4:00 at Meadow Street.
Awesome. Thank you, Kim.
It would be nice to see the full board there. Nothing like pushing ahead.[1463.11][1463.11](Laughter).
Well, if my may, it used to be nice because we were, we would serve the food.
I still work it.
We would serve the burgers and things like that, those, you know, that drove a lot of people there.
Kim, you said that was at Meadow Street Park, right?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so we have two items from Commissioner Rotundo. Alderman to Torrey, do you want to take those up, or should I just discuss them up? You good?
Just read them.
Okay, great. So, Commissioner Lieutenant, referral request for a street paving project, page four in your packet.
I'm...
Move to refer to the DPW Committee. I believe that's the request.
That is, that is a request, absolutely.
Second.
A motion to refer to DPW Committee has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
I think there's some people here.
I think there's folks here.
There's some people here dealing with this issue.
Right. So...
Alderman to Torrey.
So, this is a referral to committee, to the DPW Committee to discuss the Forest Street paving project. As I understand it, from Commissioner Rotundo, there, the design is waiting to happen, and there's been wanting to be some community input on that design. So, the hope, the expectation is to have a public meeting, and as I understand it from vacation schedules, we're going to try to warn that for Tuesday, the 9th, at 5:30.
Great.
But that's the issue, then we're referring it to committee, and we're going to hope to schedule the meeting that night. I know there are some people here who might want to speak.
Great. Did anybody come to speak about the Forest Street that would like to speak now, or would you like to wait? Till the committee?
There is some people here.
Okay, that's great. Go ahead and approach the podium and state your name and your town of residence and...
First, if you have contact info, please focus.
Great.
Can get it, I'm sure.
You're sure?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Lynn Markowski.
Email me.
I would just like to speak about the project that they're projecting forward for House Street, Forest Street, and whatever else is going on down there. One of the reasons I'm here is I would, I feel the city needs to be a little more transparent. None of us knew about this. It's taking away parking for some people. My building, I've owned it for 38 years, and I have three tenants and one business, and the only place they have to park is where they're projecting to put their green space. All the parking I have, so upon doing that, my tenants have nowhere to park. They'll have to move. I don't know what will happen to the business. I just, I feel it's a little unfair. I've spoke to some people about it, and I kind of feel that it's deaf ears, even though I'm told that there is no plan. They were there, I was speaking with the commissioner, and I just asked for some information, and we were given nothing. And Thursday, they showed up with their milling machines, started tearing up all the road. One of my tenants normally plays golf that day, but didn't. Otherwise, his truck would have been there. They, they were going to tow it. I mean, come on. I just think that these people are elected officials. Aren't they here to work with the people and for the people? I, I don't see that happening. Basically, I was told, basically, this is what, what it's going to be. And there is another, I mean, Rutland doesn't have a lot of business. Let's not chase any more out. You know, you're trying to bring people in, and what was said to me was, they're doing this to make it look nicer, which none of us are opposed to that, obviously, but that it was a safety issue. I don't see where the safety issue comes in. Right now, everyone on Forest Street is parking where the green space is supposed to be going and the curb. So, now, where that is, there'll be no parking, so everyone that does park there will be on the other side of the curb, getting out into traffic and getting out into a traveled lane, where now they are not.
Okay. Any questions for Lynn Markowski? Alderman Davis.
You have the beauty shop, right?
Yes.
So, from your corner, is, are there, from your corner to, is it Cherry, the first street, or...
I'm not sure.
Yeah, Cherry.
Yes.
I think it is the first street. That area doesn't have, has not had a green space for quite a while, correct?
Never have. Well, where I am, and the house that the Gincola's own next to me, and then there's one that they dismantled, and they made that a green space. No, there's never been, there being there.
Right, across the street by Balonos, there's...
There's never been.
Okay, I'm just trying in my mind to visualize how far the green space, or lack of green space has been there.
And then you can also run across on the edge of J.
Right.
The area there...
Well, the right on is J as well, right.
You know, I understand they're proposing the green space, which makes things nice, and it looks nice, and I was told that, you know, we're trying to bring people in down there. Well, if you look, everything is occupied. There are no empty spaces, there are no empty apartments, and I think proof of that is your hotels, which are full of homeless people.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Lynn, appreciate it. Encourage you to come to the meeting that's been, that'll be warned for the night.
That's Tuesday, at 5:30?
Yes. Is everyone in the conference room?
Aye.
Come on up, just state your name and your city of residence.
In Zulo, and I live on Forest Street as well, and I brought my neighbor along with me. We share a driveway. Each one of us have space for one vehicle in the driveway. And my husband bought the house 43 years ago, and we have two apartments. We have between us four vehicles to park, and we only have one space. So it's really gonna affect us negatively if we don't have enough parking. It's not for daytime parking, it's only for winter parking ban time, where there will be nowhere to park at all. It's been suggested maybe I buy another piece of property nearby, and we shuttle back and forth. Well, my husband and I in the winter wouldn't be able to do that because, you know, our times are different, and both of us are handicapped, we have permanent handicap plates on our vehicles. And I'm also speaking for my other neighbor on the other side of us, where they have two vehicles for renters parking out there during the wintertime also. And if you go up and down the street in the wintertime, you see a lot of the houses that have very limited space or no parking spaces. It's just gonna really be a bad situation for Forest Street. I know we've tried our best to try to make it look nice, we've redone our house, and we've loved it there, but this, this makes it feel like it's not our neighborhood anymore. You know, we weren't told about it, it was just gonna be taken from us, and so that's pretty much that.
Alderman DePoy.
So, thank you for coming in, and I know the area. I used to work down there when Pizza Express was down on the corner of Cherry Street, and I know what you're talking about, like Tina's Variety, and or, you know, Terry Own. Mr. President, this is something that we've talked about. We've had this conversation at this board, that the green space in a lot of places, or lack thereof, green space, has actually been paved over. We talked about it with a house on, I think it was Church Street recently, where people park right there, and I know that the curbs going in is something that, you know, in a lot of places, we have to do for water confinement and for the runoff. And I know that the beautification is something that we've been trying to do citywide. There are some places where, you know, we ran into people that live there on Court Square, who don't have a driveway on either side, and they used to park in what could be considered a green space, and now they're, they're parking blocks away, I mean, literally, and they're 80 years old. So we're working to try to get them some parking spaces in that area when we redo the park. But there are, there are areas like this that she's speaking of, that we have to really not have a blanket that covers every area and every space. There's got, we've got to develop some kind of a mechanism where either we, or we can direct the Public Works Department, that, you know, maybe it's best suited to have some on-street or just, just off-street parking in this area, because these houses are so close together that it's a one-car driveway, and a lot of places, they're shared. It's a shared driveway. There's a place I know that's just around the corner from Alderman Torey's house on East Street, they don't have a driveway at all. So summertime, it's okay to park out on the street right there, but in the winter, as with the case with a lot of people, there's nowhere to park. So I think that we need to discuss this a little bit further with the commissioner and/or some, you know, somebody from Streets, and find out exactly what the intent in these areas is, and if, if we can have any input to either help out, help out, you know, the constituency out there. So I'd like to refer this issue of potential green space, or it's already there?
We're in a referred motion.
Well, that, I mean, this exact one, though? This, this issue?
Well, the issue, yes.
Okay, well, then I'm in favor of that.
There you go. Alderman Talbot.
Yeah, I wonder if we can tack on to that referral, a discussion of the winter parking ban, the overnight parking ban, a lot of municipalities in the Northeast to address this exact issue, a housing stock that was built before people had cars, multiple people living in residence had cars, and have done away with the winter parking ban or made modifications to it. So perhaps we can discuss that as well, to provide street parking as an option.
Alderman Torey?
So, that may be a conversation that we need to have. I'd like to keep that separate from this referral, really allowing the residents of Forest Street to have their input, because this is really talking about the design of that. So to Alderman DePoy's point, can we do certain things? This is that meeting to figure out what do we need to do. So I'd really like to leave this referral separate, but I'm happy to support that referral as well.
Any more questions for Christine? Thank you very much. You can have a seat. Any more discussion on this topic? We have a motion to refer the Forest Street paving project to the DPW committee. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Commissioner Rotundo's referral request, possible Route 4 and 7 lane reconfiguration, which is currently in the analysis state. We need a motion to refer this as well.
Still moved.
Alderman Talbot refers.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
So, maybe I'll just add a couple of things. I think the, in the memo, it explains the process that the state is going through, but it has gone through the Traffic Committee and the, and another committee here at City Hall before it's gotten to you. There is discussion, the pavement, paving isn't gonna happen actually for two years, and they're reaching out to see if there is any desire to re-strive. And if, and those of you who were around a few years ago may recall the discussion that happened at the time, particularly on Woodstock Avenue, and there was quite a bit of pushback, and it was quite controversial, and ended up being rejected by the city, any changes in, in the four lanes versus three lanes. And so I think that that's basically what it comes down to, is what the state is, is looking to do. So, as we have been going through this, just over the last week or two, it's relatively new on the radar screen, I emphasized at each junction that we needed to be public about this, and make sure that people were aware, that first of all, it's not anything that the city is looking to do, it's the state that is asking us to look at. I still am convinced that making the changes of Woodstock Avenue is not a good idea for a lot of different reasons, safety being, the, the volume and the curb cuts and the safety of, of the traveling public, it's not a good idea. North Main Street, it's a flat area, we already have it on a couple of different exits to the city, maybe that might be a way to go, I'm not sure. But, but I agreed to have it go at least this far, to get the, get the data, have a conversation about it, and see if the public is agreeable to, to making those kind of changes, because as long as I'm here, it's not something that's gonna get forced down anybody's throat, it's gonna be something that the public is agreeable to. And again, as far as I'm concerned, it's a mixed bag.
Alderman Davis?
So, there's a request somewhere, or a design somewhere that's coming?
We haven't seen it yet.
It's just in the analysis phase right now. They're just trying to look at the analysis.
To go back to a three-lane with a proposed bike lane?
I do believe that that is the, going to be the request.
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Torey?
So, when I talked with Commissioner Rotundo about it, I was under, the understanding that, well, those are things that may come up in the conversation, it's really about studying what makes sense, looking at all the numbers, looking at what needs to happen, and maybe finding a creative way to do something better than, you know, other options that we, we know of. So, as I understand it, this is really about, about a study, getting ahead of it, so that we don't end up in the exact situation that ended up in last time before, that we're all on the same page, public input from the beginning.
And, and it is being couched as a study, but again, I do believe that the intent of the state, because this is what, the way it's happening in other communities around the state, is they're trying to reduce those travel lanes in roads similar to Woodstock Avenue, from two lanes in each direction to one lane with a middle turning lane, with some accommodation for bicycles on the side. So I do believe that it's still, basically, that's what the intent is. If it's different, then I'm sure that they will, you know, let me know. But it is, as far as our concern, on our end, it is for information gathering, to see if there is any other alternatives. But again, those, the rights of way and the width of those roads is fairly narrow, there's only so many things that you could do, because you have the sidewalks on each side right there on top of the road, and the same thing with North Main Street.
So just to finish, it sounds like we could, if there's some evidence that there's be presented, number of studies, we can make informed decisions rather than just responding to...
Yes.
Traffic counts. Traffic counts.
Traffic counts, right, exactly.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Awesome. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Ted Gillan, also in the packet, Assistant Engineer, Water Allocation, request for approval Post Road in Rutland Town, pages five and six in your packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of water allocation for Post Road in the amount of 450 gallons per day, per resident, and 2,700 gallons per day in total.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion for water allocation, it has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We have two executive sessions that will move to the end of the meeting, so that moves us on to reports of standing committees, which we have none. So then we will move on to reports of select committees. Alderman Franco, IT Committee, the report should be in your email.
Yes, and also, there was a memo that Administrator Sternisti put together that details pretty well why we decided to go the route we did, but I'll try to spell out additional detail here, so. The Rutland City IT Committee met on July 28th, 2022, here in the Alderman Chambers. Members present included myself, Alderman Talbot, Treasurer Markowski, Administrator Sternisti, others present included President Dungus. The meeting was called to order at 5:30. The committee met to review five bids that were submitted in response to a city RFP for permitting software, and other software that could be used for city services. These bids included Civic Review, Full Circle Technologies, Citizen Serve, GovBill, and GovPilot. While the initial scope of software was based on permitting, Administrator Sternisti noted that it became clear that considering additional modules aside from permitting made sense for the various needs of the city. He also noted that four bids aside from GovPilot were almost exclusively focused on permitting, and were not as comprehensive. Administrator Sternisti provided an overview of the benefits of GovPilot, and emphasized that due to its scalability to extend to future use cases, GovPilot is his recommendation. President Dungus inquired about pricing by form submissions, which was confirmed to be the pay structure for other software, while GovPilot charges by module. Alderman Franco inquired about potential bonus modules, which will be discussed further, and Treasurer Markowski requested information on the modules included, which Administrator Sternisti noted can be changed, but currently include GovAlert, which is the Report a Concern feature, building permits, zoning permits, sign permits, and COs. He also noted that 41 modules are relevant to the work that we are looking to do, so the diversity of GovPilot's modules sets us up to scale, again, in the future, should we choose to purchase additional modules moving forward. It was also highlighted that GovPilot also allows data to be centralized to each address, which increases the efficiency for city operations. Alderman Talbot inquired about leveraging the digitization of clerks, of the clerk's records, which was discussed as a possibility to be explored. Regarding financing, Treasurer Markowski noted that this was originally budgeted at $9,000, so an additional $11,000 will be needed. However, the revenue resulting from the CO payments should cover this additional expense, and so she'll move forward with trying to apply that, that funding. A motion was made to recommend to the Board of Alderman to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with GovPilot. The motion passed unanimously with one abstention from Administrator Sternisti, who has been working closely with the vendors, who submitted bids. The meeting adjourned at 6:19 PM. So there's the motion, and I say move.
Second.
We have a motion to accept GovPilot as the proposed software, with a contract price of $20,000. It's been seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments?
I have one, or just a question.
Alderman Davis.
And Andrew, for you, if I may. I don't have a problem, and I think your, your email explained why you chose GovPilot over the other, but could you just tell me what the difference was from low bid to this bid?
Yep, so the other bids were approximately, they ranged from 11,500 to approximately 17,000, so we're not overly more expensive. The low bid, which was Full Circle Technologies, had onboarding cost upwards of $25,000, which GovPilot ropes those onboarding costs into their, their standalone fee of 20,000 per year.
I think that's helpful, so folks know that when we are putting things out to bid, that, you know, we usually go with low bid, and why we didn't go with the low bid, I think that's helpful for the public, too.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications, we have an SCP request for 176 Vermont State Fair Parade, 176 Vermont State Fair Parade, August 20th, from 3 to 4 PM, pages nine through 14 in your packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the Vermont, the 176 Vermont State Fair Parade to be held on August 20th, from 3 to possibly 4.
We have a motion?
Second.
Has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the city attorney is not here at the moment. See if we can get him back in the room, and he can read us the motions.
I'll go.
Thank you.
For the control commissioners, we went through all that unfinished business, miscellaneous motions.
We can do that real quick, thank you. In the meantime...
They did put the motion in.
Board of Control Commissioners, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business, do we have any new business to come before the board? Or unfinished? Okay, hearing and seeing none.
Yep.
We are going to be moving into executive session once city attorney comes back to help us with the motions. So, take a five-minute break. Now, back to your regularly scheduled program.
Sorry about that.
City Attorney, would you mind giving us the motions to move into our first?
So this would be a motion to find the premature general public knowledge regarding probable litigation, to which the city would be a party, would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because of discussion while divulge the city's strategy in such probable litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
Still moved.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the clerk, city attorney, treasurer, and mayor. And then a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the clerk, city attorney, treasurer, and mayor to discuss probable litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1E, and Title I, Section 313A1F.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, has been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are in executive session. Thank you very much to everybody else, have a great night.